Good morning. We're going to go ahead and start at this point.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners and Vice Chair Rogers. I will turn it over to you to call the meeting order.
Great. Thank you very much. Today, I will be officiating as Vice Chair. Our Chair is at a meeting at AOC, which is Association of Oregon Counties, and is preoccupied. We wish her well at that particular meeting. Do you want to roll call us, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The Washington County Board of Commissioners is now meeting in this special meeting for the Housing Authority Board of Directors. Director Willey?
Here.
Director Savara?
Here.
Director Treese?
Here.
Director Roper?
Here.
Director Fai?
Here.
Director Rogers?
Here. Well, good morning. Again, we have a single-purpose meeting. This is the Housing Authority of Washington County. We have one action item, but we always start with public communication. Somebody slipped me a little oral message that there is a representative speaking on behalf of a number of people. Is that correct, or is that the end? Is that the five-minute or the two-minute? At the end. Thank you. All right. Kevin, will you see if there's anyone online?
Yes, we can. So, signed up in the room, Mr. Director, we are starting with Dawn Gosart, followed by David Ringkort. So you both come forward, and you will have up to two minutes.
Director, this is my first time, but this is the right place, right here, huh?
Right in front, yeah.
Got it. Right in the target seat. Okay, you want me to go first? Okay, my name is Dawn Gosart. I'm a retired teacher, and I live in Forest Grove. We made our home there for the last seven years there, Old Town. If you visit historic Old Town Forest Grove, you're going to see teachers, you'll see artists, construction workers, public servants, well-maintained homes. Older, older homes will maintain basically the heart of the true historical Forest Grove area. Within blocks, the proposed pod area is Rogers Park. Now, Rogers Park also has Ann and Abby's yard. The park was constructed after 11-year-old Abby Robinson and six-year-old Anna Geeter. Ann and Abby died in a tragic accident to a plane in a leaf pile in front of their Forest Grove homes. Then, that's where the idea for the addition of the park came from. And the point of this is that this is mere blocks from where the pods are proposed to be put in here. It's here. It's finally here, they said, as the park was finally finished. Within a half-mile radius of the proposed pods, there are 63 significantly historical homes. Within a half-mile radius of the Wincow Pods, there are none. Last week, I headed over to Wincow, and I talked to several local merchants around there. Things have gotten more difficult for them. To be fair, they think it is not just exclusively the pod neighbors that have caused this issue, but rather the subculture that inadvertently has developed around there, the unfortunate folks living in the neighborhood. They might be on drugs or possibly not on their medications. Looking into positive light, these are the ones that may be contributing to the issues that is plaguing that neighborhood over there. Oregon and Washington are in crisis, a homeless crisis. It touches each and every one of us. To speak publicly on the issue is heart-wrenching. Those without a place to call home need our compassion and a hand up. However, there is a better location to construct the homeless pods rather than in Old Town. As you know, those walking across Highway 47-
Can you summarize? This is a two-minute time period.
That's my two minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, one sentence wrap-up? It's my strong belief that this is not an optimal location to build the pods in Forest Grove. Thank you.
Before we go to the next speaker, our Chair has joined us by way of video, so she is with us today. Please.
Good morning. My name is David Wickon. I've been a homeowner on 16th Avenue in Old Town Forest Grove for 14 years. I would like to speak about the potential purchase of property near the intersection of Elm Street and Highway 47 for the proposed homeless pod and eventual building site of affordable housing, basically what Dawn was talking about as well. Although I'm empathetic to the houselessness crisis and the need for affordable housing, I believe that this location is a poor choice due to its lack of nearby services. The proposed location is not near any mass transit, shopping, or services that could help these people transition into a permanent shelter. The proposed area of Old Town in Forest Grove is primarily large historic homes, parks, and elementary schools, nothing that would aid in the transition from living in a tent to an affordable, warm, and safe apartment. There is another location in Forest Grove on the real estate market that would better serve the goal of providing affordable housing to people experiencing houselessness. The location is on the intersection of Maple Street and Pacific Avenue, is represented by the same realtor, Melvin Marks, as the property proposed on Elm and 47. That property is commonly referred to as Jim's Automotive, as Dawn said. This location would better serve the community as it is within walking distance of restaurants, of affordable shopping, and more importantly, medical facilities that can care for the needs of this extremely vulnerable population. I would like you to consider this alternate location of Jim's Automotive property when deciding where to build the transition pods and ultimately the affordable housing that is so desperately needed. Housing is but one limb of a very large tree. I believe the roots of that tree are embedded in physical and mental health services as well as addiction treatment. Therefore, being closer to medical care will greatly help the people transitioning out of houselessness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Director, we have no one else in the room that's signed up. I don't see anyone else coming forward, so we have one online, Cheyenne. Cheyenne, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Yes, I'm here to address the agenda of the resolution before the board and for the WoodSpring Apartments' potential engaged negotiations with the owners of said property. And I just had some questions that perhaps, as you vote your conscience today, you might be able to answer some questions as you go forward. It says a potential acquisition, and that the board has been engaged in negotiations. At such time, it says a letter of intent to purchase. Is this something that has already been approved? Have the owners, Hamilton Zane, already said they would purchase? And if so, would we be apprised of that, you know, in the future, as you go forward, so that the residents at WoodSpring, myself being one of them, would be assured of having housing where we won't be displaced and have nowhere to go? It's very important, as you go forward with negotiations with Hamilton Zane, as we said, it's not about four walls. It's about a community that's been here for 30 years, and it's about being close to family. And I just hope that you all vote with your conscience, but with your heart, that it could be just anyone. It could be your parents. It could be anyone's parents that looks at homelessness. I know we don't want displacement of 172 residents. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your vote in advance.
Kevin, anybody else? Would any other member viewing this meeting online via Zoom would like to provide public comment on Housing Authority business for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise-hand function. Not seeing any additional hands, Mr. Director.
Thank you, Kevin. Again, for the viewing audience and those in the audience, this is a single-purpose meeting today. We don't normally have a meeting on this particular day. It's for the Housing Authority Board of Directors. It's not a public meeting. It's an action meeting. We take public testimony, obviously, but it's an action meeting. And so we'll get into the particular action here in just a moment. I don't know, Comey, I saw you in the audience. Is there any presentation you want to make, or any information you wanted to present to us?
Good morning, Vice Chair Rogers and Housing Authority Board of Directors. For the record, my name is Comey Calaver. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. We have requested this special meeting to seek authorization for the Housing Authority to enter negotiations and, upon acceptable terms, a purchase-and-sale agreement to acquire and preserve the WoodSpring Apartment in Tigard. Over the past three years, many parties, including the Housing Authority and several nonprofits, have made efforts to preserve WoodSpring. A year ago, housing staff informed your board that the Housing Authority was in negotiations to acquire and preserve the WoodSprings. Those negotiations were unsuccessful. During the course of the past year, it became evident that no entity is suitable or able to acquire and preserve the property. Similarly, it also became clear that the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department is motivated to work with the Housing Authority. Several nonprofits also approached the owners. So, about spring last year, the Housing Authority requested J.H. Bronner Company, which is an outside consultant, to approach the seller on our behalf. Those efforts seem to be yielding results. Due diligence is still ongoing. My colleague, Andrew, will go over the financing details, but initially, the owners requested $48 million. We, through our consulting group, arranged for an appraisal that came in at $46.6 million, to which the seller responded in the affirmative. I would also like to seize this moment to offer a special acknowledgement for Oregon Housing and Community Services and its leadership for providing $25 million of the funding we need for the acquisition. There are many other projects in the county that are expiring 30-year affordability. Some are owned by mission-driven nonprofits. Some are owned by private entities. We are not in a position to make commitments that will be able to preserve all of them, but we will sure keep making the efforts. So, at this time, I would like to hand you over to Andrew to discuss some of the details of the action we are requesting today.
Good morning, Vice Chair Rogers and Housing Authority Board of Directors. For the record, my name is Andrew Crampton, Development Manager with the Housing Authority of Washington County. I have before you a few slides to walk through the context of the action being requested today and additional details that were described by Executive Director Comey Calaver. Next slide, please. The intent today is for the Authority to seek authorization from the Housing Authority Board of Directors to negotiate and, upon acceptable terms, for the Executive Director of the Housing Authority to execute a purchase-and-sale agreement to acquire the WoodSpring Apartments. Context for folks, a purchase-and-sale agreement is a legally binding document with two parties for a potential transaction. This establishes the terms and conditions framework for the potential sale of the property, including due diligence, financial contingency, and ultimately, a successful closing. The Authority is pursuing a purchase-and-sale agreement for two important reasons. The first is to acquire the property to be able to preserve the property's affordability. The second reason is to provide stabilized housing for all existing residents of WoodSpring. Some context that folks know is the WoodSpring Apartment is a 172-unit property in Tigard. The 30-year affordability period, which is established by the low-income housing tax credit in the early '90s, expired in 2020, and there's a three-year safe harbor period that ends at the end of this year. In addition, the county is coordinating an emergency rent assistance program to assist tenants. Context on the negotiations. At the beginning of this year, an appraisal was ordered in order to determine the fair market value of the property for an arms-length transaction acquisition. Through development consultant representation, the Authority, after receiving a market value appraisal, sent the seller an unsolicited letter of interest with a purchase price of $46.6 million, the established market value for the property. That was accepted by the seller, and the next step is a purchase-and-sale agreement with terms still to be negotiated for an established purchase price of $46.6 million. An important context as well is the Authority is also coordinating to assure that the financial sources for the project can be acquired in order to acquire the property. This included coordination with multiple market lenders that are active in the industry, and the Housing Authority currently has conversations and works with on a variety of understanding of how to move forward with the permanent sourcing for the property. In addition to understanding market lenders' ability to provide permanent debt for the property, the Housing Authority has done an internal audit in order to provide a loan through the Housing Authority's available local development fund to provide sources for gap funding for the property. And finally, Oregon Housing and Community Service has been in discussions with the Housing Authority through their preservation program to provide funding for the project as well in order to have a fully sourced project for acquisition and acquisition costs as well. This will allow the purchase-and-sale agreement, upon approval, to be able to move forward and the financial development contingencies as well to move forward for an acquisition. Components on the purchase-and-sale agreement timeline, while still subject to negotiations, is where we are today with the seller. The intent is to receive board approval today for the Executive Director to enter into a purchase-and-sale agreement. Upon acceptable terms, a purchase-and-sale agreement will then be executed, and a deposit will be provided per the terms of the agreement utilizing available local Housing Authority development funds. There will then be a contingency period of 30 days where due diligence on the property will be performed to understand property history, any requirements that a lender would require for due diligence, and inspection of the property. The intent is that, in the purchase-and-sale agreement, there are terms that would require the waiver of a contingency period after the 30 days to receive Housing Authority Board of Director approval. Upon the request to waive contingencies and upon Housing Authority Board of Director approval, the full deposit will be committed, as per the terms of the purchase-and-sale agreement. This would then begin the closing period of approximately 30 days to accumulate the available sources that have been preliminarily committed from Oregon Housing Community Services through their Housing Stabilization Council, as well as the Housing Authority Local Development Fund, and commitment from the expected permanent lender for the project. Additional terms being negotiated in the PSA are two potential 15-day closing extensions, as needed, in order to ensure any needed additional financial contingencies that would be contingent on additional deposits as required. It's important to understand, too, the policy preservation framework that is created by the affordability periods of the low-income housing tax credit. It's important to understand this is a unique opportunity and an effort for the Housing Authority to protect the existing housing stability of existing WoodSpring tenants and to ensure the future affordability for the property as well. That being said, the Authority does not have financial capacity to take on preservation efforts for expiring properties in the future. Rather, the Housing Authority intends to develop a preservation work plan in consultation with Oregon Housing Community Service, community-based nonprofits, and private affordable housing developers, so we can have a proactive framework to ensure affordability moving forward for properties that are subject to affordability expiration. By planning ahead, we feel that we can develop a work plan to successfully preserve in the future properties that are at risk of expiration. In addition, it's important to understand as well, public funding requirements now often require longer affordability periods. As it becomes more expensive to develop, utilizing development simply through the low-income housing tax credit and permanent private lenders typically isn't viable for affordable housing developments. Often, additional public funds that are paired with development have longer affordability periods. For example, the Metro Housing Bond Funds, which has been the key catalyst for over 10 new construction and redevelopment projects in Washington County in the past several years, require 60-year affordability periods for new construction. This will parallel with life cycles of buildings and allow proactive work to maintain affordability and to maintain livability for these properties essentially in perpetuity. Items for discussion today are: Do members of the board have any questions or concerns for Authority staff prior to moving forward with the board potentially approving, authorizing the Executive Director to negotiate and, upon acceptable terms, enter into a purchase-and-sale agreement for the WoodSpring Apartments?
Does that include your remarks?
It does, sir. Thank you.
Thank you both. And again, for the viewing audience as well as the public, it's a very unique opportunity. I want to make it very crystal clear, because I think they did as well. Washington County doesn't have the money to do this. The only way we could do it is because the state authorized additional funds. They authorized additional funds. As stewards of the public money, we can only spend what we have, and we didn't have it. And so I want to thank, on behalf of Chair Harrington, as well as this board, Comey, you for your efforts. For those of you in the audience who may not know or in the viewing, he has, at a very young age, decided he wants to take a little bit of retirement time, and so we're going to be losing Comey, but it's through your expertise and your skill set and your staff that this was able to be accomplished. So I think, on behalf of this board, as well as our Chair, I want to thank you for your efforts. That was a monumental effort and a lot of arm-twisting and expertise that you had. So with that, I'll turn to my colleagues here on the board to see if they have questions.
I just, I want to underscore what Commissioner Rogers just said, but at the same time, I also want to commend you for having a forward-looking work plan around preservation, because I think that that will help us when these situations present themselves again. But again, I want to underscore the fact that, but for the state, we wouldn't be here today. So, and we wouldn't be here with the state if it hadn't been for the good work of the staff. So, thank you very much.
Do you have- Chair Harrington, Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers and my colleagues. I want to make sure we get to a motion to move forward with authorizing this. But first, I want to ensure, in addition to our thanking the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department for the funding support to move forward with a purchase, I also want to thank our housing staff. Since the period of affordability was being approached, so through 2019 into 2020, our staff was trying to practice the art of the possible to try and avoid the potential of this property reverting to market-rate housing. And in doing so, they have been implementing a pilot program that the state legislature authorized to try to support the residents through this transition process. And I have seen our staff endure a lot of heat from community members, often based upon lack of information or misinformation, not lack of information based upon what the county had to engage with folks, but some folks weren't accessing the information that was available, or they had misunderstandings. So I really appreciate the information that has been provided in the packet for this meeting, because I think it does a nice job of laying out the facts for everyone to see. So I just wanted to say thank you to our staff for enduring all that you have and for continuing to be diligent in this potential purchase of the WoodSpring Apartments, and also for continuing to put together potential solutions for the remainder of the portfolio that will be coming off of the affordability period. And I look forward to being able to vote on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Chair, other board comments, questions?
Yeah, I would like to say something.
Sure. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Roger. I just wanted to applaud Comey and the team for all of your efforts. This has been like a challenging endeavor, one can say, especially when we hear it from a public opening meeting discussion. And it was tragic when we first heard it, and you guys jumped through hoops to find what was going to work best, and the outcome is looking good so far, so I applaud you. I'm sad to hear about your early retirement, though. We'll have to catch up with you. But I'm sure you have everything set up and a great team. You've got Joshua. You have Andrew Crampton there helping you, Melissa. So thank you for all your efforts, and it's been a journey, and I can't wait to see how you guys continue to preserve other properties.
Director Savara?
Thank you. I just wanted to add really quick to a potential conflict of interest around this before I make any further comments. I'm an employee of Oregon Housing Community Services, which is providing part of the funding for this package. I am not involved in the discussions or in the division that is providing the loan, and so just wanted to make sure that I was declaring that, but also don't see an actual conflict of interest proceeding. But appreciate the team and just echoing everyone's support for this. I also just want to name the fact that community members were so engaged in this. Like, I think oftentimes, we think about housing problems as being sort of this sleepy thing that people don't actually pay attention to, and just want to really echo the appreciation for the Housing Authority staff for listening and for hearing and for really trying to be, you know, so solution-oriented, even when it wasn't clear that there was any solution. And then also, just like, that community members engage. Like, I think that's just so huge. And I know, as someone who participated in this board for a few years now, it's awesome to see the engagement and really want to make sure that that's something that we applaud the team for being part to and being open to. So, yeah, just really appreciate the work here, and I'm excited to move forward. I don't know if we're ready to make a motion to proceed, but I would offer a motion to proceed with approval to allow the Executive Director to negotiate upon the acceptable terms under the purchase-and-sale agreement for the WoodSpring Apartments.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Any discussion whatsoever on that motion? All in favor, raise your right hand. I'm trying to count them all. I think that's unanimous, so it's approved.
Thank you. Thank you all.
That will bring us down to our five-minute opportunity. Is there anyone on the five-minute opportunity?
Yes, thank you, Director Rogers. And just to note for the public there with the motion passed 7 to 0, and we have Mr. Koi Lay to provide comments for this five-minute period. Koi, can you join us up here?
Is it, oh, there's, okay. Are there others, or is there just a single person? Okay, thank you. And other than Dale, we don't recognize Dale. He didn't live there, so he doesn't-
I would like to express the gratitude of the tenants of the WoodSpring Apartments for the actions that have been approved today. This has been a very difficult time for us, and we look forward to going back to dealing with our lives without this cruel burden. We understand that this is far from the only project the Housing Authority is working on to address the housing crisis, and we thank you for your commitment, your caring, the good work, and the changes you have made in the lives of Washington County residents and the changes that will soon be realized. At the end of my comments.
Thank you for your comments today. Dale, did you have some comments that you wanted to address?
Vice Chair Roy Rogers, Commissioners, and through Zoom or whatever it is, Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm Dale Feek, Chair of the Washington County Citizen Action Network. I didn't prepare a speech. I didn't write anything. I'm talking from the heart. You know, housing is so important for everybody. My mother was an apartment owner, landlord, and she- My mother was an apartment owner, landlord, and she really tried to have people live in her apartments that couldn't really afford it, and she really couldn't afford to not raise the rent, but she didn't anyway. So it's, for people that are elderly, disadvantaged, poor, or for whatever reason, it's very important that they have adequate housing and support services. As most of you know, I was a special education teacher. Started that career in 1970, but I started teaching in 1966 and retired in 2000. During that time, I had the opportunity to work with a variety of students that had many, many different kinds of disabilities. Autistic, learning disabled, mentally retarded, emotionally disturbed, a whole range, people that couldn't read well. And as you know, I have a doctor's degree in reading education, and I was not a good reader. I was a fourth-grade remedial reader in the closet. So I can understand what it takes to have support and to learn and grow and to reach a potential that you might not have, but other people may not have early on. Fortunately, I did have a lot of mentors as teachers. They really took me on, helped me out, and gave me a lot of opportunities. But without that help, I could not have done it. You cannot pull yourself up by the bootstraps. That's a misnomer. You need support, you need mentors, you need help. And so I really appreciate, unusual, I have five minutes. Usually, I only have two, right? So, but it's a misnomer to pull yourself up from the bootstraps. And people that are in a housing like this, and I got a button that says WoodSprings Tenants Association, got it from Koi. I've worked with Koi, because he's a leader in a group that I belong with, and I listened to him before give public comment before you. And so I really appreciate his activism and the people behind me that clapped, and they are going to have more security in their housing and also preservation. But also, I want to recognize, as you have, Comey and Kelvar and Andrew, he wasn't here as long, but they have done wonderful work. I've listened to their testimony during the work sessions and also during these times of business meetings, so I appreciate that. Also appreciate Chair Harrington saying facts, and it's very important to have the actual facts. When I was a leader in education, as a teacher, trying to in-service teachers and become better teachers, of course, I needed to be a better teacher, too, but, you know, I had a newsletter I called Freaky Facts from Feek. You know, I'm Dale Feek, right? Freaky Facts from Feek. And so it's important to have good facts, as Chair Harrington said in her comments. I also appreciate Mike Savara, I don't know if you said your name right, and he said a conflict of interest. I think it's very important, no matter if you're a state legislator, or if you're a county commission chair, or whoever you are, that it's important to openly say whether you have a conflict or a perception of a conflict of interest in making your decisions. And I have some examples in which that did not occur in this chamber. So I really appreciate Mike doing that and being open and say he might have a potential, a perceived one, but he openly said he did not. So I think it's very important for people to declare those, declare that. So in summary, thank you, and I'm glad people behind me can clap. Yay!
Thank you, Dale. Thank you, Dale. Would any other members viewing this meeting online via Zoom would like to provide public comment on any Housing Authority-related topic for up to five minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any additional hands. Director Rogers.
Thank you very much. The next part of our agenda is for any announcements. Are there any announcements on either the people who are sitting before us or those directors who are online? All right, we'll entertain a motion adjourned.
My motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed or adjourned? Thank you.
Good to see everyone.